Okay, folks, it is six o'clock. It is Tuesday, June twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five. We're in the council chambers at the city hall in the city of Platteville, and I am calling the regularly scheduled meeting of the common council to order. We'll start with roll call, Colette.
Barbara Doss?
Here.
Bob Gates?
Here.
Ken Killian?
Here.
Kathy Cop?
Here.
Tom Knoll?
Here.
Lynn Parrott?
Here.
And Tony McFaul is excused.
Okay. First item on our agenda then is the consideration of the consent agenda. The following items may be approved on a single motion and vote due to the routine nature of previous discussion. Please indicate if you prefer separate discussion and action. So we have the minutes from our regularly scheduled June tenth meeting, payment of bills, appointments to boards and committees, and tonight I have two. I'm appointing Maureen Vorwald, uh, who we all met last?
We?
Last, last, at our last meeting, I'm appointing Maureen, now that she's a retiree, to the Parks, Forestry and Recreation Committee. And I am appointing Deb Rice to the Tourism Committee. Uh, there are licenses in your packet, one and two-year operator licenses to serve and sell alcohol. There's a temporary Class B license to serve fermented malt beverages. The app can do the Platteville J.C.'s for Legion Field on Friday, July fourth. Um, a rain date for that event is Sunday, July sixth. Uh, the permit is from two-thirty to midnight. And a Class C liquor license, which is a wine-only license for A and M Bridle Boutique, uh, southwest Wisconsin, uh, and for their premises at forty East Main Street. We also have banner permits, a banner from September one to September twenty for the Grant County Cancer Coalition Auction, which is going to be on Saturday, September twentieth. And for a run-and-walk, which is sponsored by the Edward Jones Offices in Platteville. It's the Firecracker Five K, which would be at, on Friday, July fourth. Therefore, a firecracker at seven-thirty in the morning. Do I hear a motion?
All items listed under the consent agenda.
I do have a question and one.
Do we have a, first of all, do we have a second?
A second.
Okay.
Okay.
Ken, what's your question?
The question is on, um, consideration of consent agenda. And you have the correction there that Christopher Wright will be appointed instead of Angie Wright. Now, the thing I'm bringing up is that, uh, forestry is supposed to be urban forestry. So I was on the forestry, urban forestry at one time. I was taken off of that. But that is supposed to be urban forestry here in the city of Platteville, not just forestry in general.
I think, Ken, when we-
I worked on this with a committee, and we worked on redoing chapter ten, and we worked on especially using, I guess it was up Stevens Point. So I'm saying this should be urban forestry.
As the name of the committee?
Right.
Okay. We're gonna do some committee study anyway, so we'll take a look at that. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda.
I have one more question. Citizens' comments, observations and petitions. Uh, we were to have a meeting June twenty-third, but that was rained out and was held here. Is anything gonna be held in relation to, uh, this dedication of the Mitchell Roundtree Historic Marker?
That was held yesterday, and-
Yes, but it was rain washed out.
No, it was here in City Hall.
I know, but it was washed out at the place.
Correct. So we held it here at the alternative location.
Is there gonna be anything in future?
The, the round, the Mitchell Roundtree Stone Cottage will now be open for tours starting this Saturday.
But there won't be any-
Okay. Okay, I have a motion and a second. Uh, Colette will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And now we have citizens' comments, observations and petitions, if any. And I do have a couple of people who have asked to speak, but before then, I do wanna congratulate the Historical Society and, uh, our president pro temp Kathy Cop, who acted as emcee last night for the dedication of the, um, historical, uh, Grant, uh, Wisconsin Historical Monument Sign. Did I get that quite right? Historic monument marker. And, uh, I was going to tell Kathy, it would be interesting to know how many of those we have in Platteville. We should send somebody on a scavenger hunt, because I'm thinking there might be as many as, this might have been the fourth. And there's another one coming. So it'd be just interesting to see that and catalog it. And, uh, the other question I had, uh, since I pass by one every day, is who is responsible for the maintenance of Wisconsin Historic Markers? Because-
They are.
The, the-
Director last night.
Said that.
He said that.
Right. So we probably should alert him.
If we have any issues-
We should alert him.
I mean, yeah.
Okay.
Contact them.
Okay. Um, folks that have asked to speak, uh, for an item that they, I just want the council to be aware of, properties on Hickory Street, Steve Stefflug, um, two-seventy North Hickory Street. Steve, you wanna come to the podium, please? And Steve, we ask you to come to the podium because it's recorded, and then we can all hear.
Yeah, I've been working with Joe on this for, oh God, how long? Two years? At least two years. There's four lots in question on Hickory Street, two-forty, two-seventy, three-hundred and three-thirty. I'm here representing my mother-in-law, she's ninety-three. This is, for us as a family, has reached epic proportions. She's now in hospice. She's dying. Um, I talked to Joe last week, and he said to contact Tri-County, um, the title company. So I went there Friday, Joe, and he basically washed his hands of it. He said, "The city, he thinks, is done with this mess. Uh, Tri-County can't do anymore. They have given us permission not to do surveys." And initially, they said that we had to hire, uh, Delta Three or someone like Delta Three to completely resurvey all four, all four lots, to reestablish lot lines. My question is, and now that, um, my mother-in-law, she's no longer cognitive enough to re-sign the quick deed releases and the new deeds. So now, our attorney, yesterday morning, said, "We're probably, as, us as, as a family, are better off waiting until she's passed." Because he's not even sure, my wife has power of attorney, he's not even sure if it's legal for her to sign the deed. What my question is, is up in Lancaster, the right map exists, right, Joe? The correct map with the correct lot descriptions, the way it's supposed to be?
Not that I've seen.
This is what the county gave me. They said the old map exists, where it got flip-flopped from one to six, what was it, south to north, and now it's one.
Yeah, the plat has originally created, yes.
Yeah.
Right.
Why can't the city recertify this map?
Uh, well, my saying it's a little more complicated than that, because all the deeds have been issued based on that map, so all the deeds have to be redone.
So for those of you who don't know, these folks live in a, on a property, and so let's just say my property is one-thirty-five Preston Drive, and I know that's where I live and that's my address, but my deed may say two-thirty-seven.
Yeah, and-
Because at some point in time, instead of going from south or north one way, they flipped those lots so that the four lots have wrong numbers.
Correct. Well, and we're from a, from a-
That's about right.
So the plat was lots one through four, and whoever created the lot, the deed descriptions years ago went the other way. So there's four lots that have the wrong legal descriptions attached to the first.
Isn't it, isn't it though, isn't it six? Because we have a split lot in next-
There's some parcels in there, but there's four.
And that's where our property falls in, because we legally own, according to the deeds now, we own approximately thirty feet of three-hundred, and they own about thirty feet on the south side of ours on two-seventy. It's a mess. It's a disaster.
My conversations with Tri-County was, they were working with an attorney that was gonna-
Yeah, with Matt, the same attorney that we had.
The deed corrections, and there, the holdup was with one of the property owners had a loan with an out-of-state bank.
Yes, and that's Dave and Joe at three-hundred. The, the problem now is, they are scared to death to contact their mortgage, mortgage company. They're afraid the mortgage company's gonna make them completely reopen the mortgage, new closing clause, everything. So they don't even wanna contact mortgage, mortgage company, and they wanna sell their house. They-
Uh, ma'am, I'm sorry, you can't talk from the audience.
Yes, and according to, uh, the title, according to Tri-County, if, the, the only house that doesn't have mortgage on it is ours. Any of the houses that have a mortgage on it, they have to contact the, the lender, or, um, they may have a default clause that'll be kicked in, and then, then the, the loan will go into default. My question also is, and we're working with Matt right now, he's developing all the quick deed releases, the quick deed, and the deeds. He's putting together a list of everything that all four homeowners, the, each one has to do, and then we're all gonna try and get together and get this over with. I, I only have, the reason I'm here is I have two questions. One is, that's who we've retained is Matt at Carmen. You said that the city has authorized up to a thousand dollars in reimbursement for the fees from him, correct?
It's what I was told by the city manager.
All right. Okay, then my next question is, what are we paying property taxes on? Because I know when you go to the tax rolls, we filed a claim for the, the storm damage. Our claim was denied because they went to the city tax rolls, and my mother-in-law Gloria legally owns three-hundred, and they legally own two-seventy, so they denied the claim. So what are we, what are we paying property taxes on? Are we paying property taxes on three-hundred, and they're paying it on ours?
My, my understanding is that you're being assessed correctly for the structure.
Yep.
I'm not sure you're being assessed correctly for the property.
How do we find that out?
Well, I think what we have to do is get it fixed.
So I don't know who's, I don't know where the responsibility for this lies, or lays, whichever.
It would be fun to point fingers back at yesteryear at all the people that kind of made this type of thing, I think.
Was it the city, or was it a surveyor? Who did this?
I would say it's probably a combination of oversights on several- Whoever wrote the original deed descriptions screwed up. And I don't know who that was. I, I'm guessing that was an attorney back in nineteen-sixties or whatever happened.
Yeah, I know our deed switched in nineteen-seventy-three is when our lot description changed, according to the original deed.
From my understanding, the only way to fix this is to change those deed descriptions and get them assigned to the right person.
See, when I was in Lancaster, they said, one thing that the city could have done was just originally just go back and recertify the map. The map's sitting there in Lancaster, but it was decertified in the seventies.
Yeah, and that's not the city's role, that's the county's.
They said it's your responsibility.
Yeah.
All right, so let's get this worked out. Clint, could you, uh, uh, be in contact with the, uh, county administrator and, uh, the county board chair, and let's figure out and help these people get through this problem?
It's, I think-
I understand the problem.
Within the next few weeks, I think it's going to be fixed. But the main reason I'm here is Matt wanted to know, he wanted me to come up here and find out how this happened, who did it, was it a surveyor, was it the city? That's what he wants to know.
And I don't know if it's possible to know that.
I guess it probably happened so long ago that trying to research, uh, who did it would, would be kind of a Sherlock Holmes thing.
Well, the four homeowners have kinda put me in charge of this mess. So who, who do I contact about when, when Carmen sends us the, the invoice for this? You?
Send that to me.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, and I know that, uh, I know that there's, uh, other people on your block who are equally unhappy about this situation. Yeah. Okay, uh, the other, uh, green sheet I have is about an agenda item, so we will, uh, forego that discussion until the agenda item comes up. And, uh, that would then close our citizens' comments, observations and petitions. Uh, there were reports in your board packet. Uh, Airport Commission, Tony isn't here, Nickeluk isn't here, so I guess we have no report on the airport. Parks, Forestry and Recreation, Bob?
Nothing to add to the report.
Plan Commission?
Same with Plan Commission.
Library Board?
Nothing to add.
And Water and Sewer Commission, I have nothing to add. Uh, how about you, Tom?
Nothing.
How about you, Ken?
Audition.
All right, then we're to the action items. The first is Resolution twenty-five oh nine, Compliance Maintenance Annual Report. Uh, for two thousand and twenty-four, Howard?
Yes, thank you. Um, the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report is our annual report due by June thirtieth, a self-report. Uh, since the last meeting, we corrected two errors. Uh, the enclosed is the corrected copy. We have an excellent wastewater treatment plant with excellent staff. Our financial condition is stable, management procedures are in place. Our system is graded in A in all areas. Uh, we have a resolution attached, uh, that demonstrates that you, as the common council, have reviewed and approved the submission. The Water and Sewer Commission approved, uh, reviewed this on June eleventh and recommends that you approve the resolution.
Okay, questions, or do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion by Ken and a second by Kathy to approve the Compliance Maintenance Annual Report for two thousand and twenty-four. Uh, Colette will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next is the Public Participation Plan for the two thousand and twenty-five Comprehensive Plan Update. Joe?
Yes, um, yes, we discussed this a little bit last meeting. So we're working with Southwest Wisconsin Regional Planning Commission on a new update to the plan. Um, there is a requirement, it's a state law that says as part of that process, uh, the city has to have a public participation plan, basically a, an outline of how you're going to engage the public and gather public comment and input into the process and the plan itself. So, uh, we have what I would consider an outline to, um, this plan, or a, a plan that provides an outline of that process. And then there's a steering committee, uh, which we'll discuss later on this agenda that will be set up to kind of fill in the blanks or the additional details on gathering input, um, from the public. So, um, this did go to the Plan Commission, they recommended approval. Staff does recommend approval that we adopt this plan as part of the, uh, Plan Update. Any questions?
Okay, questions or comments?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And, um, the question is, uh, do I need to go to the city code to find all these numbers? A state in Wisconsin statute, for example, would be sixty-six point one zero zero one four E. Is that where I need to start?
Those are not city code references, those are Wisconsin statute references.
Wisconsin statute?
Correct.
Forget to read them.
Uh, they would be online.
So I, I thought in the past I had to go to city code to read this one.
Oh. We also have a copy, Ken, of, uh, the statutes in our office, if you'd like to get access to them. We have a copy of the state statutes, the books in the office, if you wanna stop by during hours, we can get you.
And they're all kind of on line, and then you would find the chapter and stuff. I know it's not any fun, but it's there. Uh, I only have one question, and as I look at this public participation plan, it says something, and I'm glad that she added, uh, south, uh, Southwest Tech and Platteville Public Schools. I'm just a little confused about, about why we would limit comments or that meeting to students. I, I, I think that that's, I mean, the third meeting will focus on engagement with the university, Southwest Tech and the Platteville School District. I'm not sure why we would limit that to students. And so I would propose that we just take out the word "students." With that, I would be, uh, more than happy to sign that, but I think we need to delete the word "students" because I don't think we need to not include staff or faculty here. Deleting the word "students" from there.
I think, Barb, that she meant to include staff and faculty in those first two meetings.
I have no clue.
Because there are two meetings at different parts of town, just for convenience. And then maybe this one was more students who don't live in town. I, I'm not sure.
That's why I say, to me, she's not here to answer questions, I say we just eliminate the word "students."
It wouldn't make a difference, faculty and staff could go to any of the three meetings.
Correct. Kathy, you want?
Sure.
You have to get to your microphone.
For the two thousand and twenty-five Comprehensive Plan Update with the change on page two and strike the word, under public meetings, strike the word "students."
Okay, we have a motion by Kathy and a, a second by Lynn to approve the Public Participation Plan with striking the word "students" under the Public Meetings section on page two, page one, I guess. Yeah, I guess it was on page one, I don't, whatever page, it's under Public Meetings. Okay, uh, Colette will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on our, uh, action, uh, agenda are the two thousand and twenty-six proposed, is the two thousand and twenty-six proposed budget schedule. Uh, Nicola isn't here, so does that mean you have to pinch-hit for her, Clint?
I am. So as we talked about, um, in our last meeting, we've got kind of a schedule that looks quite similar to the one that we used in putting together the budget for this year. Um, we did make the one change, I believe it was September third, twenty-third date, uh, that we tweaked to make sure that that lines up on our meetings. And again, this is kind of the roadmap of, uh, please make these available, uh, for the ones that kind of queue into you folks and to keep you impressed of what we're doing kind of on the inside City Hall and preparing and managing the planning. Madam President.
Okay, uh, the schedule was in your, uh, packets. I believe that, uh, this looks remarkably like it did a past year. Anybody with questions? Uh, the, the, those highlighted in yellow are, um, council inclusion times, and you can see, uh, where there's a special meeting for the council scheduled for Tuesday, uh, October twenty-first. Otherwise, all of the budget discussions are part of regular meetings. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
I have a motion. I move to approve the proposed schedule for the city of Platteville, two thousand and twenty-six budget.
A second. Okay, we have a motion and a second by Kathy and Lynn. You can pick, Colette will vote.
Doss?
Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Killian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
Knoll?
Yes.
Parrott?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that concludes the action items on our agenda tonight. So we'll move on to information items, the first of which are the annual video report reviews. We had Fire Department, Police Department and Public Works. Clint?
Thank you, Madam President. In preparation for strategic planning and comprehensive planning, the city manager will be updating the, the common council on preparations for planning, which includes these annual reports. You've mentioned the ones that, uh, we're going to be talking about tonight. Um, we did have some questions come from council. I'd like to kind of iterate those two directors tonight so that the responses given back are heard by all. Uh, so first on the stand will be Chief Simmons. Chief Simmons, if gravitate towards a mic. Um, so the first question is, in context of you mentioning in your report that we have space for sixty volunteers, and currently we have fifty-one volunteers on staff. Do you feel that fifty-one is enough to handle the normal number of calls that you receive?
Okay, so, uh, my response to that is, uh, that depends on the day, the time, the time of the year, uh, whether or not that is. So of those, uh, basically fifty-one volunteers that we have, like right now, twelve of them are UWP students. So as you can tell, in the summertime, we are down twelve firefighters, twelve volunteers. So that takes that number down to thirty-nine. Um, summertime, obviously, there's, uh, a lot going on. So sporting events, um, and so forth, family vacations and, and whatnot. So just an, an example, um, our last major fire that we had, the initial response was eight firefighters. Um, obviously, within a short period of time, uh, a few more showed up, and then we used, uh, heavily used, uh, mutual aid support for it, but, um, eight is not necessarily an adequate number, um, for a fire response. So, um, we are seeing some impacts now, um, and we'll probably continue to see them off and on at different times throughout the year as well, too.
The question that kind of, uh, builds upon that then, given the decrease in volunteer firefighters, both here in Platteville and what we see nationally trending, do you foresee our future staffing model, including more paid staff? Uh, by paid staff, uh, including paid-on-call or paid-per-call as well as full-time? Also, do you know if other Wisconsin communities similar to our size, Platteville, have had to increase their number of paid staff?
So I do foresee a, a staffing model change in the next two to five years. Um, you know, it's not a matter of, of, if it's gonna happen, but it's when it's gonna happen, and when we'll need to change that. So it is getting harder and harder to get volunteers to, um, to do that, uh, for no form of pay. Um, it, it just seems like time is, time is short for them, so to convince them to give up added time with their families and, and activities and jobs for nothing, um, is getting harder and harder to sell. Um, so, uh, many of, uh, if not probably almost all of the kind of benchmark cities of Platteville already are doing some sort of paid staff. So, um, most are doing a paid-per-call, um, with an hourly rate or a version of a paid-on-premise. Um, that includes Monroe, Fort Atkinson, Whitewater, River Falls, to list a few of them. So they're all already, um, a form of paid staff.
And isn't it true, Ryan, that those communities had to go to referendum to add to their budget, because it was, I know Fort Atkinson did, because it was a, almost a two-million-dollar increase?
Yeah, most, most of them would. I mean, just a, a community's Platteville side would take probably fifteen to eighteen, if you went to a career staff, it'd take fifteen to eighteen firefighters to provide twenty-four-seven service of probably four to five firefighters at any given time, um, which is not a lot, um, to have. When your house is burning, you probably want more than four people to show up. But that in itself, um, you're, you're looking at a, a base level, um, with benefits and so forth, fifteen to eighteen, um, firefighters would cost you probably one-point-five to one-point-eight million dollars. So, yeah, a, a major expense to it, you know, when you figure benefits and, and costs and everything and outfitting, it's about a hundred thousand a firefighter per year.
Are there any other questions or concerns kind of in the staffing realm? Otherwise, my, the next question here kind of shifts a little bit. Uh, third question then is, have you been affected by the current administration's reduction in FEMA grants?
So, um, as of yet, no. Um, but we don't, we don't know that yet exactly what's gonna happen. There's lots of unknowns in, in FEMA, um, in general. Um, some of it is related to just staffing, so funds are still available, but staffing is being cut way back. Um, so we don't know how that will impact it. Uh, we have seen, um, some major reductions already in FEMA, and that's affected like their, um, assistance to firefighting grants. So the current cycle that's been out since like January was when we submitted the grants. So the current cycle that's been out since like January was when we submitted the grants. Normally, all the grants would be pretty well exhausted by June. They would have issued that 380 some million dollars of grants. They have yet to award a single grant yet. They're still processing them, but their staff is so small that they're really delayed on even issuing, awarding those grants. So we're being impacted just on staffing decreases already. So.
So that not knowing what grants you may get will really affect the budget you come up with.
I mean, FEMA grants are never a given anyways. You know, the AFG grants, there's, there's probably $2 billion worth of requests for $350 million of funds. However, we have been successful in the past. We just a couple of years ago received almost $400,000 grant to upgrade our air packs. Grant County as a whole has been very successful, have received millions of dollars in in grants through the program. So there is that possibility that it can impact our capital, I'd say our capital budget more than our operating budget. Because items that we typically write grants for are are large dollar equipment. You know, air packs was 400,000 and they last 15 years. Thanks.
Is there any other questions that you folks might have for Chief Simmons? I'll switch to Doug, talk about some PD. Comments and questions I have for you, Chief? Early in your report, you have staffing charts that show six telecommunications, three full time and three part time. Would the number of required telecommunications decrease if the Platteville Police and Grant County Sheriff's Department had a consolidated dispatch center? And then on that as well as also, do you get any financial reimbursements from? Well, let's let's handle that half of it first.
The potential exists that if we were to move towards consolidation, that we could have a reduction in staff, overall staff between Grant County and the Platteville PD. Along with that, there are a lot of unknowns and so that's why we are applying for a detailed study to provide good, solid, actionable information for elected officials and staff to make a decision about consolidation.
With that said, then, do we get any financial reimbursement from UWP or from Southwest Health to cover costs of the telecommunications?
Yes. There is a formula that is largely dictated by the state that the UWP pays the city for police services, among other services, dispatch, garbage collection, I believe, water and sewer. And that formula, I'm not really sure how they derive that formula. It has gone up in some years. It has gone down in other years. I don't fully understand how it is, how they arrive at it.
So that's the payment for municipal services?
Correct.
So they don't get a water and sewer bill on their own?
Yes, they do.
All right, so water and sewer is not included in payment for municipal services?
Correct. But the factors in which they arrive at it is a conglomeration of different variables. And then it's also though, from what I understand, legislators put so much money in the giant pot and then that gets prorated out by formula to toss.
Yes.
So. Accolades on a use of your community service officers and a echoing on congratulations on the second straight accreditation for Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group. This next question, do the crimes and accidents in the performance measures charts include crimes and accidents committed on the UW Platteville campus and attended to by UW Platteville Police?
You do not report the crimes and accidents that occur on the university property. They are documented and reported by the campus PD.
But would you report them if you responded?
Not if they're on their property. We assist them, but we do not take credit for them or and report them as our own, captured on any reporting forms that they submit.
I maybe have one more. If there, if council didn't have any one, I would have one more for you, Doug. I haven't heard it yet this week, but can you explain to me again, we're authorized for 22 officers, we're funded for 21. And when we have shortages, can you again, maybe perhaps explain how that impacts with trying to staff?
Currently have a authorized strength of 20 officers and we are authorized for 21. That position is not currently funded because it was the funds were reallocated to use to offset employee wages during budget processes, I believe.
And can you kind of talk about examples like we've had, we did have a little bit of employee movement and now that potentially impacted overtimes and schedule management?
The the biggest problem with it is the time to reload in terms of personnel is greatly increased now from the time that we begin advertising to ultimately hiring somebody and then getting them through the academy and through field training has great greatly increased. Whereas previously, we would be able to hire officers coming out, or excuse me, young people coming out of the academy or speaking badly here, coming out of college. They would then attend the academy on their own and we would be able to hire them. And then approximately four or five months, we could have a new person out on the street functioning in a solo capacity. Now, nobody is going to the academy on their own. And fortunately, the state does reimburse us for the costs of academy if someone, if we hire a candidate and send them through if they successfully graduate. We have not seen that situation yet where somebody doesn't graduate and then we're left with basically an candidate and the bill for the recruit school.
I think recently we had some challenges where we were perhaps short one officer and we had like an extended FMLA that kind of exacerbated.
Right. It takes very little. We utilize a 12-hour schedule and that really maximizes the number of officers we have. But you do need to be near full staffing to realize those benefits.
Are there any other questions? Howard?
Oh, just a comment. Nice job on the public relations and outreach programs. I think that'd be really important.
The joint effort with the school district on the community resource officer is a big part of that.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it, Chief. Howard, a couple of questions for you, sir. This one was kind of a generalized type of a question regarding the capital budgets kind of in advocacy and addressing streets and storm sewer infrastructure needs. I think we report that our current street replacement or street replacement cycle is at
130 or so years is what I believe it was right now. Yeah.
That's based on like the one point, is it about a million that we're funding CIP?
About a million and a quarter funding. What we have is we've got at current, at current value, we have roughly $170 million worth of of street and storm sewer infrastructure. And if we assume that it has a useful life of 40 years, that means that we really should be putting in over $4 million a year. And when you put in million, million and a quarter, there's a big backup after a while. Doesn't take long.
That's for full replacement at 40 or is that included in like thin overlays and other coat seals and those types of mechanics?
I I would prefer that we do a full replacement at the end of 40, including some of those other treatments to get them to the 40. Yeah, the 110,000 in wheel tax money that we use for our for our thin overlay, we would be able to do a thin, one thin overlay on every asphalt road. And I think it was about 45 or 47 years.
Talk on funding sources then to like in approaching this, how we manage it with not only levy support and CIP support, but also looking for support from state, federal funds to trickle down to us and perhaps even utilities when we're doing water, water sewer repairs?
I do what I can to get federal and state funding for a lot of these roads. But there are a lot of hooks and a lot of caveats and a lot of other things that come with it. A lot of times they will tell you that it's an 80/20 match. But then they say, well, it does not include real estate. It does not include this. It does not include that. And oh, by the way, our 80% is capped so that if you ever go over that, then you're on the hook for everything above that. But so in a lot of time, a lot of cases, that's closer to like 60% funding. But that's 60% that the citizens don't have to come up with. So we try to do the best we can with it. They also, because of their hooks and everything, it takes a long time to do a lot of these projects, get them off the board on and and working again. It'll take three to five years for a lot of these projects to get get going. We do have a new cycle coming up. The grant submissions are due October 31st of this year. And they're really looking for projects that are 2029, 30, 31 in in their cycle. So I'll be looking at a number of different roads for those sorts of those sorts of things. As far as the utilities go, we've worked it out. Public Service Commission has authorized that a percentage of the cost of a street replacement can be placed onto the corresponding utility if we do them together, 20% for the for the water, 20% for the sanitary sewer. So when we do a road together, like Seventh Avenue with water sewer and everything else, water and sewer pays for basically 40% of the road cost above it. Because if we had done them separately, kind of like Pine Street, where you replace a water main and then you have to replace the road above it, that's what they figured the equivalent cost would be. So we're trying as best we can to use as many of these alternatives as possible to to do that.
Council, have any additional?
Any other questions?
I I just have a comment. I'm not, I went back to look at the video and that was what the noise was. Sorry. I don't remember seeing anything for future goals as far as sidewalk repairs. I just know, I didn't see that. We talked about this a couple of meetings ago where you have, I'm going to use the word measly, roughly $30,000 a year to repair sidewalk. I think that needs to be addressed because as we're constructing more sidewalks, just like a street, but that there's going to be needed repairs.
Thank you. I will include additional increases in the sidewalk repair budget request. I had put in small increases over the last, for the last couple of years on the cycle, but yes, we definitely need a lot more. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Any other question? Howard, you know, it's always difficult, I'm sure. But I, I would have to believe Platteville is not alone in its
Challenges with keeping up?
Challenges with the keeping up with roads. So I'm sure that you're a member of several associations. So is what you have reported to us a common lament at public works?
Yes, it is.
So it's a common lament, just like our roads in the state, state roads.
Correct.
And it ends up being, we've got so many roads, we just don't know how to keep them. I mean, we put them in pretty good. But then to maintain them becomes a real challenge.
Thing Howard had mentioned to me is that it might, in order to maintain the roads at the 40-year cycle. 5% I guess for municipalities and our own is what, 3.5?
Well, and
That would increase taxes.
That would increase taxes, but then you'd be paying a lot of interest. So then, you know, you can always borrow, but you have to pay the piper somewhere sometime.
I just don't really see a solution. I mean, you only have so much money and if the have a lifespan of 40 years and a repair cycle is 100.
Okay.
Couple more comments just on that then. On July 9th then, asking you folks if you can watch the admin, the city manager and the community development presentations. We'll have our final Q and A with that. And then two, you may have seen come out to you an email that there is going to be the city manager conditions and maintenance tours provided by directors on July 2nd, July 7th and July 8th. Council members are invited to those, as many as that you're able and willing to attend. The email has a little matrix on the wins and the wears and the hows. It is going to be fast and furious. It is called a walkthrough. It might be more of a run through. But it would also be accompanied with a report that these folks are putting together to kind of point out some of the major conditions and maintenance needs for buildings, grounds and equipment. Madam President.
So I believe you sent that detailed list of where you start, where you don't. Yeah. I think I printed that out. I suggest if people are going to participate in that, that you let you print it out and also that you let Clint know if you're going to participate in what days or or tours you're going to participate in.
That would be great. And I did make hard copies and boxes for you folks as well. Pick up.
Good. All right. So that was the annual video reports. Next, we have the city manager budget guidance.
Hey, so the budget guidance, Platteville City Manager is tasked with an oversight and preparation of the city budget. As part of this oversight, the city manager releases an annual budget guidance document to directors that helps convey financial tenants, conditions, assessments, parameters and priorities. As indicated in the 2025 budget timeline, the city manager intends to release this document to directors in and or about the second week of July. This document sets the tone and direction for the budget budgeting process. And the city manager is looking to engage in conversation with the common council on key budgetary elements. The foundational elements of this document is the city manager's financial tenants and principles. The city manager is looking for discussion, feedback on the following. So again, the financial tenants and principles. The city managers are tended to give city administration guiding principles and ensuring the annual budgets are prepared with consideration for legal obligations, long-term commitments and current financial priorities. As you can see on the bottom of page one and stretching into page two, it's kind of broken into a series of commandments, if you will. On the top section is budget preparation will do these types of things. So I is by statute, we're going to abide by levy limits imposed by state statute, less exemptions. And that means like we have to abide by your state levy with exemption on debt service levy. There's an exemption for those types of things and a few other exemptions. The next statute requirement is to meet maintenance of effort required for The next statute requirement is to meet maintenance of effort required for supplemental shared revenue, which we just acquired two years ago. And that means that we make sure that we have a maintenance of effort going towards
Fire and
police and, and roads and such. The other state statute then is to meet eligibility for the expenditure restraint revenues. We were given a break on that one in the previous years due to the changes and the fluctuations with the increase of shared revenue. But looking to maneuver on that as well to, to maintain our expenditure restraint. And then the next two are by ordinance. This one is maintain less than a three point five percent of total equalized value in debt. As Bob just talked about, that's our current imposed level by ordinance. And going into this budget cycle, we plan on having that in place. If discussions change in our financial projections in the future, of course, that could be changed up to a five percent. Ordinance, recognize section three point four-two of the municipal code, which is the limitation on council authority to make expenditures. And this is an ordinance that we would have enacted in the fire facility, I'm sorry, in the pool discussion. It's the ordinance that calls for a referendum question on buildings, a project over a million dollars or a three-quarters vote by council, I think, to waive that requirement. And so we would be maintaining compliance with that as well. And then we have a common council policy of ensuring an undesignated general fund balance remains at twenty percent of the general fund budget or higher. And so these are kind of the parameters then that thou wilt do this when a budget comes forward, city manager. The budget preparation ought to, which is a little less of a downgrade, but not quite an option, is we have agreement in place yet to provide streambait stabilization every two years with PCA. The same agreement then is provide seal coating for PCA trail completed every five years. In previous discussions we've had, it was talked and kind of consented that that would be an honored agreement. Now, at the same time as we work through the trail expansion project, we've also now recognized that there's a new funding source through the rural trail development projects. And we do have a tentative change to this agreement that's in place. But as, as of right now, we have it kind of listed as ought to include this. Item number three is a resolution yet to be determined, which provides a CIP for local match for the state highway eighty-eighty-one reconstruction project. And that one we have to bring forward to you. That is a project that is templated, Howard, for twenty
Thirty-three.
Twenty thirty-three. But with that, we have to kind of make the commitment now, and some of the local match is to get funds for surveys and design work.
Design work will start this fall.
So it's another one of those gifts that still is a gift and you kind of gotta do it, but you're kind of obligated to spend money on the front end of it. Also, from the state's perspective, they just kind of said like, well, you really won't need to get the money together until October. Cause they work on a fiscal calendar and not a a calendar year. So for them, that's not a big deal. And for us though, they don't know that they quite realize we've already had our budget in place and we didn't put money aside for that project. So that is a thing we have to sort out, but that, that's kind of an ought and anticipate that is we have more of these long-range types of things. We're gonna try to keep track of those through the ought section and having resolutions assigned with these to keep track of all of our long-term commitments. And the next one is a practice. Consider a possible cost of living adjustment for wages and possible, and possible progression on the compensation schedule as provided by Carlson study, typically referencing our cost of wa- or CPIs provided through the Wisconsin Employee Relation Corp., which is given down by the Department of Revenues on what an estimated consumer price index is. And then also keep in mind though, that the Carlson study is a series of steps for each position. And, and when that study was initially adopted and the technique of trying to reach that was essentially the study said for the most part, we're not at market for our employees. They're, you know, they're not at a step six or seven where our market rate is. But we don't quite have the financial capacities to try to shift all those folks. So we're on a step progression plan to try to get folks to a market type of a value. So it'll probably come forward with a recommended potential CIP. A, let's age the entire schedule to keep it up with the Joneses. Plus, we're also trying to progress as we planned with the study. The next one here is another practice. Borrow no more than the previous year's retired principal with consideration given to a percentage change in the total equalized value. This is to try to keep our CIP spending at a neutral type of a level, but it doesn't necessarily include things outside of what we would consider a CIP borrow, like a pool impact, where it's something that's kind of above and beyond an annual CIP. The next one is a practice as well. Primarily, we're designating CIP borrow to street reconstruction and CIP levy to equipment building maintenance and grounds. And then our final ought to is on the, the next page, which is a practice. And it's the annual contribution of fifteen thousand dollars to airport CIP, which either arrives at a fifteen thousand dollar fix out there or in the event that they're able to land an FAA grant for a major construction project, that's usually a ninety-ten split. And then I think the Wisconsin Department of Transportation Avionics kicks in another five percent, which leaves us only a five percent local match. So fifteen thousand might score you as much as three hundred thousand of a maintenance project if those planets align. The final one then is a budget preparation should. Practice, identify long lead equipment purchases that may be necessitated in a separate resolution for commitment in future years for delivery. Plan on getting their practice of bringing more of those forward, whether it's for trucks for Nick or fancy fire trucks for, for replacements for Ryan and some other types of things where we have to put money down this year to get in line to have a product delivered to us in twenty forty-eight to fifty, or
Two to three years for, for street department trucks, a little bit longer, I believe, for, for fire trucks, but yes.
Again, so in identifying those, I think it's appropriate in practice to try to capture those in resolution. And so that we can add them to this reoccurring list so that we understand our financial commitments on the front end as we embark on another budget process. So again, these are the tenants, and I believe I made a mistake again on one of these, is a tenants versus a tenants. Apologize, Ken, if you missed it. But if you had any thoughts or discussions, if you think we're on the right course with this, I'm looking for your feedback here tonight. Did I make it dry enough?
I think it reflects what we, it reflects our practice.
Good, good, good. That is the intent. It's not supposed to be flashy. It's supposed to be very, very dull and very predictable, because that's the, the base we're gonna build all this on, so. Very, very dry. Yes, dry sand to build on.
I say, Clint, that the process that you've adopted that we're following with the ports, the way they were done, raises an awareness that really kind of sits us back as far as obligations and responsibilities. I mean, it's a reality check. Sometimes you look at the big budget and it's like, okay, well, we gotta do this, this, and this, but seeing each department's presentations and then seeing this, it's like we're in a box and, and it makes it somewhat harder, somewhat more difficult. It's, it's ma- it's gonna make it.
Well, I, I guess the other thing is, is I, I mean, these are available online. And I'm hopeful that, that some of our citizens would look at these. Because it's real easy to say, you should. Why didn't you do, or, you know, it's real easy to be critical from the outside. And, you know, that's fine, but then get some education along the way. I mean, I think we have city employees that do outstanding work. Do they do, do they do everything? No, because they can't. But they work hard and they do great work.
And I'm, I want to clarify for everybody that my comments were a compliment. I mean, this is, yeah, it's a reality check that
In, in
This is tough. These are tough decisions.
Well, in bringing these things forward are, and it's not, I don't want to make this sound like it's only bad news and where it, it's just, it, it's, the intentions of all this is to make sure that the stuff that we're talking about on any given day is the same information that you folks know about in that interface. Because when folks might not necessarily like the answers from us, that you folks know what we know if they come to you. And likewise, at the end of the day, you folks are making the decision on a policy, that's a budget, that's driving all the pieces that we're going to do. So we want to make sure that it's transparent, that you folks have the information, so you can make decisions on what we're going to double down on, that we, things that we need to keep and keep well. And what things that we want to plan for, for the future, so that we have that balance of both maintenance and vibrancy for, for, for future generations. So, so thank you for the comments and please recognize that while I get the accolades, these poor folks here are the ones that get tasked with all the legwork on, on making it happen.
Okay, we'll move on then to the next information and discussion item, which is availability for strategic planning. Clint created a very nice little chart for you to fill in and hand back. So I don't know how many people have done that. I know I've handed Clint mine. If you have not handed yours in, fill it out to the best of your ability. It will be interesting to see if we can find days and times when all of us are available, other than, I mean,
We'll try to find something. Ideally, we would not want to use the same time as council, because that stretches into four hours and that can be pretty exhausting. So, and I will pick up lens, I see her is there. And Ken, I will call you tomorrow and I will track down Tony's and get a date out to you folks hopefully before the end of the week. Or dates, multiple dates.
Sounds great. Review and approve comprehensive steering committee members.
So, so, one second here. On June tenth, city manager issued a call via email to elect and appoint officials to recommend candidates for a comprehensive plan steering committee. The intent was to identify individuals with knowledge, experience, and expertise in a range of focus areas, including land use and planning, education, economic development, workforce development, small business, parks and recreation, higher education, civic engagement, public safety, public information ac- access, et cetera. Based on input nominations, Alicia Schaefer has began building a, a list of the folks that were recommended by our elected and appointed officials, and that is the spreadsheet that is before you tonight. And so it's got a list on the left there. You'll see the folks that were currently recommended, the position, function, expertise, kind of that they are, are kind of intended to fill. And then kind of just a, a progress update and if they've been contacted and if they're available to participate. The intent is to try to arrive at about fifteen to twenty folks. So we don't have a full roster for you tonight. But if there is feedback that you have, by all means, you can share it with me in the meeting here tonight or send comment to my, to Alyssa and CC to myself and Joe and Barb. And we'll put this list together. We anticipate then, no later than July ninth, having a list that you're going to authorize Southwest to appoint as members. Madam President.
And this would still be open if somebody has others they want to suggest. I see that she has not contacted everyone. Okay, well, that's what we know about. I guess we'll move on to the next item on the agenda, which is Pine Street Repairs Project Update.
Sure.
Uh, Howard.
Yeah, I'll be turning this over to Dan here momentarily, but we have awarded the contract to temporarily excavating. Work will begin on June thirtieth and completed by August twenty-ninth. Tomorrow afternoon, four P M. Right here, we will have an information meeting for affected property owners, businesses, and residents to kind of explain what's happening, which roads are closed, what the, what the detour routes are, all that good stuff. And so Dan can give us a quick update on, on where we are.
Thank you, Howard. Um, yes, we had a, as, as Howard mentioned, the contracts are completed with temporarily excavating to complete the work for the Pine Street repairs on Pine Street. We had a pre-construction meeting last Wednesday with the contractor as well as city staff to this, over this, the proposed schedule. Right now, their schedule is that on Monday, June thirtieth, traffic control will be installed on Pine Street as well as all the side streets and the detour route, which will include Furnace Street. Howard mentioned that we are having a public information meeting tomorrow at four P M. Here in the council chambers with the businesses that are immediately impacted along Pine Street, as well as all of the businesses that are located in between Pine and Main Street, with the focus on schedule, what the road closures are going to look like between Main and Pine, as well as communication. Our plan is that we are going to have a weekly construction meeting with the contractor and city staff that will be emailed out to all of the impacted business and property owners. And our also intent is that we'll be doing daily email updates to city staff, as well as those are im- are impacted by the project. So with, with the start of the project on Monday with traffic control, it's gonna take half to three quarters of a day to set up the traffic control, just because of the amount of traffic control that's going to be installed. If you saw the traffic control plan, there's not many places where there's not a sign being put on. The detour route specifically on Furnace Street, because Furnace Street is going to go, be converted from a two-way to a one-way street, going from Water Street up to Chestnut Street. Every intersection will have a combination of no left-hand turn, no right-hand turns, one-way traffic, et cetera, to try to help keep people in the right, going in the right direction. In between Main and Pine Street, we will have some, we will have road closure signs, as well as there would be many stalls that are low, gonna be signed for no parking, particularly like on Court Street, so that people who need to use the post office or Marine Credit Union are able to drive down Court Street and then have a place to turn around at the end of Court by Pine Street there, so they can get their mail, go to the bank, et cetera. And there's gonna be a few other side streets because of similar situations. We'll have turnaround areas that are gonna require no parking. So with the, with the installation of the traffic control on Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the contractor is going to be working on soft cutting the existing concrete paving, as well as rubbleizing it, basically breaking it up so they can remove it. If all goes well and the weather holds out, they will start water main replacement late next week or early the week of seven-seven. They want to get everything rubbleized ahead of time so that they can focus on installing the water main. With, as Howard mentioned, the goal is to have everything completed by Labor Day. This week, this, the weather this week is, has not messed them up yet. Knock on wood. Hopefully the next few days stay decent. So there is a potential that if something happens, then we don't get a start, it may get pushed back a day or two. People are going to ask, why are we starting right before the Fourth of July? Why not wait a week? Essentially, we talked to the contractor about that last Wednesday. They want every day possible that they can work out there. They feel the, the four days before the fourth, even though it may cause some, some additional travel grief potentially for someone coming through, but they felt the four days were gonna be very important to them. Are there any questions about the process, the project, or anything coming up?
And so anybody's invited to the meeting tomorrow?
Correct.
Is there a presentation at the meeting?
Yes, yes.
It's not going around and speaking into
Yes, we're gonna
Presentation.
Yep, we're gonna provide a brief presentation with the traffic control. We sent letters via snail mail, which we found out is very slow these days. We sent them out last Monday and most people got them today. However, we did try to contact as many people as possible by email. And it was also in the chambers news in a nutshell last week. So hopefully that got the word out to everybody. At four o'clock here.
Yeah, I understand there, and actually with our Fourth of July activities being at Smith Park and, and Smith Park, we really, and city, well, some at City Park, but the, the main Legion Field. So, good. Any other, any questions on the Pine Street repairs? Who goes first and then tours done, so?
Payment replacement, yep.
Okay.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have Pine Street pedestrian islands. Howard.
You can put up a couple of those things. Um, okay, we have three pedestrian islands along Pine Street between Oak and Chetan. Uh, one is just west of the Oak Street intersection. One is just east of the Third Street intersection and the other one is east of Bonson Street. Uh, they were placed, uh, where, uh, the center turn lane is, there's no left turn or no corresponding street. Uh, they were constructed as part of the 2006 project. Um, they're, they're meant to provide, uh, basic guidance for, uh, visual clues for drivers to help stay in their lane, uh, to also to help watch and yield for pedestrians. There's the place for decorative plantings for beautification. Uh, what we've found out is since they were installed, the one that seems to get the most use is the one at Oak Street, uh, mainly for people who are crossing from Ruxton to McGregor Plaza and places like that. The other two get, uh, rather sporadic use. Um, um, the, there's some pedestrian traffic between the main branch and the drive-up, but most employees who park in the parking lot on Third and Pine don't use that crossing. They, they cross directly across from the parking lot to the employee entrance that's up the hill, uh, where, where this is more at the public entrance to the main branch. Um, the one at Bonson gets very little use also. Uh, most people seem to want to cross at Court Street to be able to get to the bank and the post office and stuff like that. Um, due to the water main break, the one at Third Street was damaged. We have concrete that's been lifted and, and other things. Now, we don't see any damage right now at the Oak Street Island, but once, uh, once we excavate next to it, we may find some damage to it. I don't know yet. Um, some of the pros for keeping the island and possibly repairing the damaged one are the, the pedestrian safety and one landscape, the beautification of a kind of a sterile concrete street. The cons are that these become constrictions to traffic and plowing and then the cost of maintaining the plantings in a high salt environment. The snow plows that we use have the front mounted blade and a side wing to provide the plows an extra width. Due to their constriction, the plows have to be physically restrained, uh, so that the plow and the blade can pass between the island and the curb, limiting the wing. Uh, and so because all the plows need to go up and down Pine Street, they're all configured like that. To change this would mean going to the shop, removing the bolts and pins about an hour per truck. Um, now, if we had a street like Pine Street without the islands, the crew could plow the street in three passes instead of four passes. Uh, it would reduce the number of passes on streets like Business 151. Our Parks Department is responsible for snow clearing of the sidewalk inside the islands. It can be dangerous to clear the snow because they have to end up basically pushing it all the way across the traffic lanes. Uh, we also purchase, uh, plantings and plant them in the islands. The islands have very little soil and then, as I said earlier, they get a lot of salt. Um, and this year, uh, they install river rock instead of plantings because it's just so hard to, to do a lot of that stuff. Um, the removal and replacement with flat concrete and repainting the crosswalk would, is included in the bid price. If we did not do that, that would result in a savings of about $13,000 over the, uh, out of the project cost. Uh, so we're looking, hopefully, um, like I say, our parks and our street crews are really hoping that we get rid of those islands finally.
I've had one citizen, um, asked to comment on this. So, Michael?
A- as he's approaching, I just wanted to let people know, I, I have scheduled a special community safe routes meeting for Wednesday to discuss this topic and present their recommendation to the council at the next meeting. Sorry, go ahead.
Hey, my name is Michael Walsh. I'm the executive director of the Platteville Main Street Program. 435 West Madison Street. Thank you for providing me the time to be able to come speak to you tonight. Um, I've read the recommendations to remove the islands from tonight's packet, which Howard just went over. Um, and I understand the street department's desire to remove those islands. However, I question the time save plowing Pine Street, um, a few times a year's warranty, reducing the safety of the citizens that use it on a daily basis. And specifically, I'm talking about the one on Oak and Pine. As Howard mentioned, that is a heavily used crosswalk. The other two, maybe not so much. Maybe removing those does make sense, but at least the one at Oak and Pine is the one that's, I'm really questioning tonight. U.S. Department of Transportation states that pedestrian islands reduce accidents by 56%. They create a visual enhancement alerting motorists of their presence, which in turn reduces speed and the possibility of an accident. Report 841 from the NCHRP, um, states that pedestrian islands reduce accidents by 32% compared to standard crosswalks. Removing the island would remove those visual enhancements and even with a marked crosswalk would increase the likelihood of an accident. Also pedestrians themselves would feel less safe crossing Pine Street without the islands in place, specifically the island at Oak Street. Islands are designed to be able to look one way in traffic, cross through the middle, and then look the other way and be able to cross the rest of the street. And with a lot of the residents and speaking upon their behalf from Ruxton Apartments, it's a little slow for some of them to be able to get across the street in a timely manner and having that island there helps them be able to navigate that crosswalk. Without the safety of the islands, pedestrians would be more vulnerable and in an essence be left standing in the middle of the road without that island. As for the planners, it's my understanding that these were not originally part of the construction project, project in 2006, that removal of the planners and replacing them with decorative concrete or another substrate might be a better option. Uh, finally, I would like the council to consider that during construction, a high visi- high visibility RRFB, which is a rectangle rapid flashing beacon system, be installed at the crosswalk, um, at Oak and, at Oak and Pine. Uh, the current system does not warn motorists that pedestrians are present. It only warns them that a crosswalk is present. The use of an RRFB can increase driver yield rates significantly, up to 90%. They've already encountered accidents at this crosswalk and had many close calls, and I believe that an RRFB would significantly reduce the risk of any other accidents happening. Uh, as Howard said, I just found out that Safe Routes will be informed of this tomorrow and will be sending their recommendations. I'd also request that any information on it be sent to the Main Street Program so our board could take a look at it and make their recommendation as well.
Hey, anybody with comments?
Um, Howard, is there a code that states how wide the island has to be? I'm just wondering if it could be narrowed, putting in the RRFP flashing lights and some signage. So, um, best of both worlds could be achieved where you could still have the seven to eight foot blade without having to take the bolts out and take the side thing off, still do the streets. Um, or would taking like four, that would be taking two feet off on each side, so four feet on the whole island. Would that make it too narrow for people with, um, wheelchair
I would have to look. I would have to look to see.
I'm not sure how wide it is.
Uh, I definitely concur with Michael relative to the crosswalk at Oak Street. I have on more than one occasion seen people standing in the middle of that street and frankly, those people couldn't get across the street if that island weren't there. So, I, and I really do believe that those islands cause people to go slower up Pine Street. And as a person who lives on West Main Street, and the rate at which people go on West Main Street, which I believe sometimes is 45 or 50 miles an hour, I don't think we want to encourage 45 or 50 miles an hour coming up Pine Street. So I, I mean, I understand and, and I understand that it, uh, I, I don't know if plantings were originally part of the island. I can't really remember. I don't think I was on the council at that, that time. I don't have any problem with decorative concrete either. Or, I mean, we have that on other streets, but I really think that particularly the island at Oak Street is important.
Yeah, I, I agree with you guys too. I just, um, while we're talking about it, just could, um, envision all the people that were coming from, like Jenna Towels or from, um, the other building, Ruxton, going, just going across the street with their buggies to go to the grocery store. And so just knowing that that how active that area is, turning in and out of Rux, you know, out of the grocery store area and it's definitely a lot, it's a lot. So I would really, um, wish that we could consider keeping at least the one on Oak. Um, the one on Third is, not there, is it Third? Is it the one where Court is?
Um, Third is the one that, uh, is damaged right now. It's visibly damaged. Uh, the other one is above the, the, where the break occurred. Uh, closer to Bonson, yes.
You know, one of them, a lot of, uh, children, a lot of kids come from that side of the street to this one to go to the library. I know they use that. They can use the corner, but I just know that.
I concur with the, I think the, the one on Oak Street is important. Um, I, I've crossed that, um, and it's a wide street. And, but there needs to be an education piece too, because I've seen people not even look. They see that crosswalk and they just go. So, a consideration for the flashing pedestrian light when there is someone there. Um, I know that if you eliminate the other two, there's going to be some cost savings. Would it be possible to roll that into the, um, the flashing light on Oak Street? And then I like, um, Bob's idea that if we can make it smaller, that the plows still can use their. We'll take a look at that. But I, I agree. I think the Oak Street one is used a lot. Um, but I've also, I've, I've had issues with, with not the one at Oak Street, but I've seen semis go up over top of that. Yep. So, and, and I am, and I would also like a consideration. I heard the word colored, colored concrete or stamped concrete or something. I'm not a fan. I mean, it adds costs and concrete is concrete. It just, a colored crosswalk isn't going to add anything for safety pedestrians. If you can save some money.
I just don't want that street to turn into a racetrack. And I, I definitely fear that when I go on other streets in this town that don't have traffic calming. I don't know what, pieces or whatever you call them. I mean, we've, we've done a lot to try to improve safety by putting in, uh, turning lanes and those kinds of things. So I don't want this road to turn into a racetrack and that's, you already see people going fast. I, I guess the other, the other thing is, is, uh, you know, I understand that the Mount City Bank cross from their parking lot, not on a crosswalk to their door. So as we look at this street, is there a crosswalk consider, if you're going to take out the, the, uh, island, is there consideration for putting in a crosswalk?
It would not be, it would not be ADA compliant because of the steepness, um, on the bank side. As you come up from, from the existing crossing and you go up closer to, uh, Fourth and or Bailey, um, that, uh, that portion between the sidewalk and the curb gets very steep. It's not technically handicapped accessible when you do that. Um, I mean, people traverse it all the time, but we cannot legally put one in if it's not in, if it's not ADA compliant. And it would be extremely costly and difficult to, to make something ADA accessible in that location.
So there will be no crosswalk then?
We can still put a, a striped crosswalk, um, where the island used to be, that can still remain. Um, but yeah.
Right now, are there signs on the sides? Not flashing signs, but like pedestrian crossing signs?
Yes, there are.
Okay, well, we'll wait to hear what, uh, Safe Routes and others have to say about this. Uh, moving on then to the Aquatic Center reconstruction bid.
Thank you, Madam President. During the 2025 Capital Improvement Plan, CIP budget process, the comm council took action to repurpose funds in support of the Platteville Family Aquatic Center project. On September 24th, 2024, the council approved the following motion. We had motioned, I'll second by cop, to move the Southwest Road sidewalk project for 200, uh, 225,000 from the 2025 CIP budget and to include the shelf project pool vessel removal, uh, for 225,000 in the 2025 CIP budget. And this motion carried on a five to one vote. Uh, following that action, city staff began working with the Platteville Aquatic Recreation Subcommittee, PARZ, uh, to explore reconstruction options. A recommendation was brought forward to the common council to pursue a full reconstruction of the Aquatic Center, uh, conditioned on a public support through an advisory referendum. The question presented was, should the city of Platteville borrow up to 6.9 million for their reconstruction, or sorry, for the construction of a replacement aquatic center? The results of this referendum indicated strong public support with over six, 76% of votes in favor. Yeah, since that time, staff has advanced primarily, uh, advanced preliminary project work using the 225,000 CIP allocation, in which we built a, a pool of, fund for the project. Contracts have been executed for architectural design, engineering and geotechnical services totaling, uh, to date at over 95,000. A schematic design has been completed and design development is underway and a construction manager has recently brought on board. A continued progress, uh, towards demolition and construction staff is seeking clarification from council on the total amount of borrowed funds to apply for the project. Specifically in addition to the, specifically in addition to the full 6.9 million in general obligation note borrowing intended for the project, how much of the 225,000 is, uh, repurposed from 2025 CIP funds and is allocated towards the total project expenditures? So to try to simplify all that, we kind of took two motions. Uh, the first one was back in September. We said we want to repurpose this, uh, for a, a, um, for the removal of a vessel. Um, the project certainly evolved and accelerated when we started learning more about the time spans and trying to get referendum questions in place and trying to get contracts lined up so we could potentially hit a 2026 opening window. So we kind of took it under the assumption that that repurposing of those funds was dedicated for pool expenses in which we've engaged with, uh, surveys and all this preliminary type of stuff. Um, we're, we're just looking for clarification now on how much total funds that we're going to borrow is going to be placed towards the pool. Is it 6.9 plus 225,000 for a total of 6.125? Or is it just 6.9 and that was supposed to be included? Or is it somewhere in the middle, uh, so that when we have our discussions and we're working in design and putting down that this is the base bid product, uh, that we're bringing forward to the community, um, what is the total cost of that project to make sure that we're all on the same page, if that makes sense? So I wanted to make sure that we kind of had a chance to chew on this and take action if needed. if needed so that we're all on base of this because we do need a unified message in working with our, our fundraising teams and our designers to make sure we're all on the same page. Madam President.
Okay. Anybody, I recall this motion, I recall discussion, I recall that there was absolutely nothing included in the 2025 budget for any information about the pool. It was like we were going to wait until 2025 and then maybe in 2026 we were going to allocate money. And I believe it was at that time that we reallocated the 225 to at least get something going. So in my opinion, the expenses that we incurred with Chosen Valley Testing, the expenses that we incurred in preparing for the referendum and having, we had a phase one contract. It appears we engaged an attorney at some point. It's my opinion that that money was not, I mean, that the six, that is money in addition to 6.9. That this, we don't say, well, it was, we asked the community if we could borrow 6.9 and now we're going to subtract all the money that we spent last September. I don't think that's, that's not, I mean, we allocated 225, we asked for 6.9. That's my opinion.
I'm confused by that because I thought it was, what you said was right. There was, there was no money. We reallocated it to get the project started.
Right.
I thought it was for the phase one to get ready for the referendum. And then we had the testing, there was some attorney's thing, and it seems to me like there was expense, but...
That's about 92. I would say that 92 at least comes out of the 225. Now whether you want to take the 225 and subtract the, and I'm just using round figures, 92, and so then you have $163,000, I mean...
But it's, but my thought was not that it was all going to be for the pool. I mean, if, to get it started, knowing that we were, because my thought was that when we saw the numbers for the 6.9, it included engineering, the design fees, the, you know, all of that. So I, I never took it that of this 225,000 was all spent for the pool and then still borrow 6.9 million.
I did. And what I thought happened that night was we needed to get started so it looked like we were doing something and also just so we were doing something. And Bob had said it would cost $300,000 to remove the vessel and turn it into like usable land. And so we took the 225,000 to get started on that. And as things have worked out, it's probably going to be less expensive to demo the pool as part of the construction and demo bidding right now. The $20,000 for JEO was like kind of pre-referendum, public marketing stuff that had to be done. And I thought that was supposed to come out of that, as was the CVT, the Chosen Valley Testing Geotech. So that's another nine, so it's 29,000. Epic is going to be putting out a bid for demolition. That should probably take place in August sometime, but at that point we will know what the cost of the demolition is going to be. So I would think at least whatever that cost is, plus this $29,000 and maybe the 1562, the Delta III, was paid to be involved in that initial stuff would, would be what we the demo for a little while. But I thought that the actual action taken that night was to use that money to remove the vessel. Is that correct?
Well, that's what the, that's what the motion says.
That's what the motion said.
Right.
And so I think it should be used for the cost of the demo and then those two other items that Kathy mentioned, the CVT Geotech stuff and JEO's preliminary work.
Yeah, that was my understanding too, clearly what you said, clearly what you said like that.
And some of these other things that we've paid for, you know, that, that really wasn't, like the design, that wasn't part of that. The design is part of the 6.9. But whether it's spent now or later, if we would take the cost for the demolition and those two other items and just use that.
I would say that the, that the, the stuff that was made for the open house for the, before we voted was part of, I don't know where that is.
That's that $20,000.
That's that $20,000 and that's...
So the $20,000, the $9,000, that had to be done.
And then the demo, I guess.
There was another, there was actually another, I can't think of the name of it, another type of survey, a topographical survey.
Yep, that we authorized. I don't even see that. I don't know.
That was done by Origin.
Right.
I don't see that.
It's not on there because JEO contracted Origin.
Oh, so we would have to look at that bill.
We'd have to find out. It was probably around, do you remember, like $13,000 for that topographical survey?
Sounds, I can look it up if you want it tonight, Bob.
But, so I would think that and then the cost of the demo. And work.
All the rest of it is in the 6.9.
That would be in the 6.9. Take those like four items and subtract that total from the 225 and come up with something that is fair.
And, and then what, what's with the rest of the money?
Then it, well, we didn't borrow it, so then it just, it, it just resverts, reverts since CIP for something? Well, it wouldn't, I mean, it could revert to CIP or it could just be not spent since we didn't borrow it.
We've not borrowed it as of yet.
This was in the borrow and the reason this came up is because at the last meeting when we were talking about the borrow, it was like we weren't borrowing as much as we had authorized to be borrowed. And part of the reason was we weren't borrowing the 225. So it's money we don't have, if, that we, that we have not borrowed. So we just won't borrow that.
I'm good with that.
Then we just don't borrow that.
Otherwise...
But it's 6.9 plus the expenses that we just talked about.
Okay.
You won't know, we won't know the, the cost of the demo.
I know that, but that's fine.
That gives us at least some estimates to understand on where our parameters are. So I mean, that's, that's, thank you. We'll see, we'll bring that kind of back in a final, then the final borrowing solution when we're bringing the authorization to borrow will include a plan that includes those items.
Why wouldn't the, I mean, just help me out, why wouldn't the demo be part of the preliminary of, why wouldn't, why couldn't we use the rest of that money and cover the demo and then the loan would pay for the actual building and facilitating of the pool?
I think that's what we just decided to do.
Oh, because that's, I thought we were using, I'm sorry, I thought I heard that we weren't, that that money for the, whatever I just said, was going, coming after 6.9.
No.
We'd take the cost of the demo, the top...
Cost of CVT, the two surveys.
Technical and the top...
And the prep.
Survey and the $20,000.
Phase one. And whatever that is, is part of the 225 and then we still borrow 6.9. So since we authorized 2.225 before we ever asked about 6.9.
The demo part comes out of the 225.
Right.
That's what I thought I heard was coming out of 2.9. Okay. Glad to ask a question. Does that seem...
Yes, yeah. But I do have a question. So when are we borrowing the 6.9?
That should be ASAP.
Well, I'm, I'm asking because JEO is in the design phase, there's going to be bills coming in.
Oh, when Nicola comes back from adventure, we'll be talking on it. So imagine too, it's like, so we have a separate fund that's built into our system right now. The monies that kind of come out of that fund and that pot is kind of all on a CIP pot. So we have kind of an allotment and a placeholder and we're making expenditures out of that pot. So when we do the actual borrowing, that's the filler of that pot.
Mine was going to, okay, if we don't have any monies, is that going to put a stop to the design until we get the money borrowed to do...
So, so one of the reasons are in our tenants of budgeting, we try to maintain a fund balance of so much. It is because that money then is there for us to pay for things before other things happen. When I was on the school board, we would often have to do short-term borrowing in September. Maybe we would do a six, six-week borrow because the state's shared revenue for the school district didn't come until the end of October, the beginning of November, and all of a sudden we didn't have enough money to pay the salaries of the teachers the next month. I mean, we had enough money, but we didn't, it wasn't in our bank, it was being held in somebody else's bank. So it was part of the budget, but we just hadn't received the cash. So that's one of the reasons we maintain this cash position so that we don't get caught having to run out someplace and borrow money for four weeks or six weeks or whatever. All right.
Thank you.
So I think we only need one more motion tonight.
Adjourned.
Okay. So, Collette, we have a motion and a second from Kathy and Lynette to, or Lynn to adjourn. Well, sorry, you almost got Lyneted. Yes.
Gates?
Yes.
Ilian?
Yes.
Hop?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Herit?
Yes.